If I could have your attention, it's 5:30, so we're going to call the, let's see, what is this, February meeting to order? And the first item up is Michael Bilbrowski, who's going to lead us into pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Barbara Board Williams is going to read our mission statement for us tonight.
The mission of the Botha County Schools team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students and educating them to their fullest potential.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments sign up? Okay, so we'll skip over public comments and move to approval of the agenda. I've been instructed by Mr., I mean, for Dr. Phipps, if we don't have any changes, anybody else have any additions or revisions?
Move through.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have the agenda, and that carries us to the approval of board minutes. And I hope you've had time to look over these, because I think I see about eight different minutes, meetings, lots of them.
Mr. Chairman, let the record show, I will not participate in voting on the minutes for the February 8th meeting since I was absent that night.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Got it, please. Anybody else? Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion of the second to approve the meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we're going to move into public recognition, and Ms. ECP will be helping Ms. McColl over here, and I believe they'll be handling that tonight.
The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of February was kindness. The nominees were from Bath Elementary, Ian Asby; from Chaco Wendy's Middle, Kamani White; from Chaco Wendy's Primary, Sarah Ashley; from Eastern Elementary, Hendress Ray; from John Cotton Taylor, Ryan Jones; from John Small, Nancy Cruz, Laura; and from Northeast Elementary, Malachi Moore. And the winner at the elementary level was Sarah Ashley from Chaco Wendy's Primary. She will come forward. Sarah is a fourth grader at Chaco Wendy's Primary. Her parents, Mark Charlie and Danielle Ashley, they will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Smith, and she will stand as well. Ms. Smith wrote, "Sarah is the perfect model of kindness. She has impressed me numerous times with her willingness to help others and her desire to make sure everyone is okay. Whether it be math, reading, or another subject, she reaches out to help anyone in need. Her greatest acts of kindness stem from her being a big sister to a fellow student who has difficult times in the classroom and on the playground. Without my asking her, she has taken the role of helping this student both academically and socially. She sees when he is struggling with work and quickly moves to help him. She also intervenes when tensions run high and tries to talk this student through his emotions. Sarah has impressed me with her skill in helping others and the kindness and patience she exhibits while doing so. In addition to Sarah being there for her fellow students, she is also an asset to her teacher. She is always there to help whenever possible." The list goes on to describe Sarah's examples of kindness and generosity. She is the personification of kindness, and I am proud to nominate her for this month's Character Education Representative. We say congratulations to Sarah.
Shake your hand if you need more minutes, or you need to go outside. Thank you.
Congratulations.
She changed hands.
from Chaco Wendy's Middle, Victor Gonzalez; from Northeast Elementary, Katie Young; and from PS Jones Middle School, Charlie Moore. And the winner at the middle school level was Katie Young. She will come forward. Katie is an eighth grader at Northeast Elementary. Her mother is Ms. Melissa Young, and she will stand. And is presented by her teacher, Ms. Lisa Baumann. And it says, "The eighth grade would like to nominate Katie Young for the character trait of kindness. To be honest, it is very hard to pick one specific act of kindness from Katie because kindness could be her middle name. Every day, Katie always has a smile on her face. She has helped in the office, she is active in the Girl Scouts, she assists with flag duty, she tutors classmates in math, and I could go on and on. She is very personable, courteous, mannerly, witty, studious, compassionate, and I do not think I have ever, ever heard one negative thing come out of her mouth. She is always bubbling with happiness and oozing kindness, and I do not think she even realizes it. Katie is a great example of a stellar star NES student. We say congratulations, good job."
Tell Donnie I said hello.
Congratulations. Good work there. Good job. See you.
Thank you.
Recognize dad, too. He's here.
Yes.
At the high school level, the nominees were from the Early College High School, Catherine Blanford; from Northside High School, Amelia Woolard; from Washington High School, Breann Rollins; and from Southside High School, Faith Bolden. And the winners at the high school level, and the winner at the high school level was Catherine Blanford from the Early College High School, and she will come forward. Catherine is a 12th grader at the Early College High School. Her parents are Crystal Bateman and James Blanford, and she was presented by Ms. Ginger Jefferson. Ms. Jefferson wrote, "Catherine Blanford is one of the kindest students I have ever met. She is always making others feel appreciated and cared for, and she never expects anything in return. Every day, she stops by our data manager bookkeeper's office to speak and places a hand-drawn smiley face on her door. In watching her tutor others, she is gentle in tone when questioning their understanding, and she makes them feel at ease. She is always willing to take on tasks without grumbling and questioning. As our Rachel's Challenge Care Group leader, she is always looking to make others feel welcome. As I was writing this nomination, it dawned on me that Catherine literally fits all the character traits that we look for in our students, but of all the traits, Catherine is truly a very kind person. Catherine will graduate this May, completing her high school diploma and associate's degree in just four years. She will truly be missed at the Early College High School. We say congratulations."
I hold you grateful. You keep me good working.
This time, we'd like to recognize the February Clean School Award and repeat winners from Chaco Wendy's Middle School with a score of 99.5. Like to ask Carlton Robertson, the head custodian, Kederek Daly, and Serena Gibbs to come forward, please.
Once again.
You didn't even have to wait until you want to do, you know the routine, don't you? Y'all be awesome.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Really.
Awesome.
It's super kind of you.
Yeah, I don't think they.
Shows that you don't have to have a new school either to, you know, have a clean school.
That's fine.
I don't know the guy's name, but actually, I was over two months ago, maybe, in the school, so he was in.
Doing it then, but I don't know who they use now, some guy.
Obviously, they did a great job.
We'd like to also recognize their schools that had a 95% or higher as honorable mention. And this month, SW Snowden had a 99. Southside High School had a 98.5 with a 98. PS Jones and Ed Tech Center. Washington High School, Chaco Wendy's Primary School, and Bath Elementary with 97. Northeast Elementary, 96, and Northside High School and John Small with 95. Let's give them a round of applause. Eddie?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think Catherine's mother and father just came in.
Oh, okay.
Do y'all want a picture taken or anything?
Sure.
Versatile capture.
You sure? I mean, we'll be having. Sarah's right here, we got everything.
Sarah's got a camera, come on, get up here.
Yeah. Let him take one with her.
Turn around and take a picture.
Yes. Good catch.
They're proud of her.
Good catch, buddy. Thank you. We're in no hurry, we've got plenty of time. Actually, right now's when I take a moment. If you came for the recognition, we'll take about a one-minute break, and if you would came for just that part and would like to leave, now's a good time. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, though. We're getting into the good stuff now, too. That was the good stuff. We're getting into more good stuff.
I'm coming out.
But now's a good time.
Because I've got some news for you.
Okay. Oh, yeah. This is usually when we, we usually clear the room right about now. Thanks for coming. Thank you. I guess everybody else is thin. So that takes us to, we have one item as a no-action item, and I think Mark, you're up.
Yes, sir. I have three grants, just to make you more aware of the city. First, Boca County Schools requesting $145,000 from the KBE Rentals Charitable Trust to enable the creation of a public park on four and a half acres of land on campus of Boca County Ed Tech. I believe Ms. Oros has spoken with you all before about that project. Grant funds will be used to construct a playground, shade structure, and walking trail, and to improve the parking area and playing fields. The park will be jointly managed and maintained by the schools and the City of Washington. That was outlined in the formal agreement signed back in June 2015. So we're just now applying it for the actual grant. Boca County Schools also submitted a grant proposal, Conservation Funds Resourceful Communities Program, enabled staff to community summer feeding enrichment program at Aurora Community Building. If this were funded, all children, youth ages birth through 18, living in and around Aurora Community, and receive free breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday during summer vacation, and participate in enrichment activities such as story hour, environmental education, and physical fitness. The meals are funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture Summer Food Service Program and prepared by Carol World Early Learning Center. The total grant request is $7,350. We've done this in the past, and is asking to continue it again this summer. And then finally, Boca County Schools submitted a letter of intent to buy the community benefits grant program to support the purchase of four automated external defibrillators for placement in four Boca County Elementary Schools. The total grant request is $8,000.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? It's not a vote, just a FYI, call it.
Yes, sir.
If anybody has a question, welcome. Okay, if not, we'll move into the action portion, and we have a calendar for the Early College, I believe.
You should have that as an attachment, and this calendar mirrors the calendar that we've adopted for the traditional calendar, with the exception of a few things. The Early College starts back earlier, as they're on the semester schedule with the college. We also have four purple dates that I'd like to draw your attention to. Two in January, one in October, one in February. Those are called satellite days for students. Because the Early College and the college itself does a lot of their work with the learning management system that's computer-based, we've worked with the Early College to have these days in particular, our teacher workdays for our traditional students in other schools. This would keep us from having to run separate buses, to the tune of about $6,000 those days. But they have to do work, the teachers report for duty, and they're working at the school that day. Students are responsible for logging in and getting work done, so it's not a lost day. It's just a day that's done, computer-based. There's several other early colleges that do something like this, but this is only designed for those days that we have teacher workday scheduled for our traditional calendar. Other than that, the calendar is early beginning and ending with the unique setup that they have, and just asking for your approval on a minute.
How do you manage the teachers getting their required workdays later if they're having to teach during those days?
They have the same requirements of 215.
But, I mean, don't they have to have a certain amount of teacher workdays? A lot of?
Well, they have annual leave days and things like we do, yeah.
Okay.
You have to have 10 annual leave days, 10, whatever the state number of vacation days are. You have to have two or three of those days that are annual leave, have to allow the teacher to take accumulated leave.
Right.
So they can't all be required workdays, but the key is from the beginning to the end, there have to be 215 workdays.
Okay.
And at the Early College, they're generally shoot for 185 days, and then anything that they miss, they have to make up.
All right.
Because they're not going after hours.
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion of the second. Any last questions by anybody? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Things always confuse me, I, it's almost one of those things, I just have to trust you, you've got so many color codes on there.
Lot of work ethic.
It's unbelievable. Yeah, it is. That would take us up to a Capitol update, and Stan, you're up. You'll see all the attachments.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
We'll start off with the project progress. Washington Field House, they completed sheet block and finishing, painted interior walls, and they started laying tile over the weekend. They actually finished it, it's done, they're doing some pine grout and stuff. And then the exterior of the building is planned to do this week, the exterior finish, once we decide on a final color.
I saw all the messages back and forth on that, was it finally decided on?
Yes.
I don't know whether we decide.
It's for action tonight.
Oh, it is?
It's been added, it's an attachment, I assume this Lisa got it added.
Oh, okay.
All right. We'll get to it in a second.
Got you.
PS Jones Concession Stand is basically complete far as actual structure. The city inspector is requiring the electrician to move the electrical panel to meet the 36-inch rule. They passed it during the pre-inspections and everything else, but evidently, the electrical engineer and the structural engineer didn't look together, and they put a cabinet there. And what we think is the reason why the city missed it is the cabinet wasn't there when they did the pre-inspection of the electrical panel. So they're hashing it back and forth right this minute, deciding whether they're going to cut the counter off or move the electric panel. So I told him it was fine to cut the counter off.
So they done the proof on rubbing.
Yeah, the power's on and everything, and it came down to the CO, and he will not give us the actual CO to the building, speaking of occupancy, and to, we resolved that, so we're trying to hash that out.
They move in if you don't have it?
That's it. Eastern Elementary Multipurpose, there was a little setback. I actually wrote this Thursday in participation for the meeting, so they did not quite finish the plumbing. They're doing the plumbing this week to finish the plumbing up with the rain and, or snow stuff Friday, and then the rain this morning, they're working to get it finished. They still haven't finished. They may pour Friday if they can get the pump truck, if not, it will be the first of the week before they pour slab. They're still on their schedule, everything's looking good for our May 17th move-in date, or fit completion date. Eastern Elementary Pod 2 Bathroom Enclosure Phase 1, per se. Ms. Dana asked them to move back to the store, they were, they finished the boxing and it, and they've got all their measurements of everything, and being they had so many cords dropped out across the walkway and so many kids, she asked them to go back to their place, and they are there, they've got it framed up, and they will be back on site hopefully tomorrow to start erecting the actual steel stuff up. But last week, she just said it was too much commotion with them running solids and stuff in her courtyard, it just didn't work out well, so she asked them to go back and do it at their place. So they got their measurements and went back to do that, so. Any questions about any of the projects?
Whatever happened to, where are we at on the sides? I know there were some issues with the structure, we were going to talk to people, are we still talking to them about that?
Well, we got a letter back from DPI, and DPI has basically told us that we needed to hire an architectural firm to look at it. There's too many factors of water and the building tops and roof drains and sculpers and the fact, the big drain in the middle, and that's one project we got, Dr. Phipps and I need to talk about and represent to y'all back on how we want to proceed with hiring an architectural firm.
Might need that $300,000.
Any other questions?
We have to do it, we have to talk to somebody.
So how soon will we get, you're going to talk to Dr. Phipps and then get back to us about?
At our meeting next Monday, next Tuesday night, whenever it is.
Are you keeping the county commissioners informed, Dr. Phipps?
Did I update them at the, for sure. You want me to present all these at once and?
Yeah, just run through them, yeah.
Okay. Bath Elementary School owning is a 7-foot by 96-foot owning connected to the pre-K building, to the existing owning, outside the 200 building. Tindall's home improvements in the amount of $7,173.27 plus the tax. We have a budget of $9,000.
Stanley, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, so it won't be a conflict, but I do have a concern about it not specifying that you've got an 80-pound snow wind load on this. Isn't that something that we want on these canopies? Are you not concerned that they would come down without that? The manufacturer's not going to warranty it without that.
I can go back and request the specs on it, and we can table them all.
I'm just, I'm just concerned, talk to Hyde County Schools, they had one come down, but I don't want, I don't want to take a chance on one coming down without us doing everything that we can to make sure that we've, you know, met the requirement. I know, I know the company where Mr. Tindall, as well as where we would get these owning, and I know they're not going to, they're not going to stand behind if you're not going to sink that in 16 to 18 inches, something like that.
Okay.
I'm just asking, so you don't know?
I do not, no ma'am, we've never had anybody ask for that requirement, so. We've never had 18 inches of snow, so, if that's what you're saying.
No, no, to sink the poles, the posts.
Well, your specs showed it'd be surface mounted, too, the same as his, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And I'm concerned about it all the way around, that maybe we need to look into the 80-pound snow wind load code. I don't know, I don't know what.
I can revisit them just a bit.
I don't know what DPI wants schools to have.
I haven't seen anything.
All the onings we got, all the onings we got are mounted on sidewalks.
Yeah.
I mean, so if, if they go, they all go.
They want you to cut down and go deep to get that kind of wind load.
Yeah, and you're going to spend another $20,000, $30,000 per owning to put them up. When you start cutting up sidewalks and everything.
We've never had one to fail, we've never had a question of any one to fall that we have up, but I can definitely revisit it.
Well, that's up to y'all. I just had that question, I wanted to ask it and put it out there.
Why don't we just ask Stan to check with DPI and see what they, what they ask for?
Yes, sir.
And if it's, if they're okay with it, then proceed on, if not, come back and bring it through.
Bring it back to us, we met next week.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's right, just in a week.
We'll skip over and just bring it back to us.
Yeah, just see if they want that.
Understand.
Just takes one to come down.
Yeah.
We only got a week, we'll be right back together.
Yes, sir.
What I say in a week, excuse me, is it two weeks? We'll see. Forty in a month, we're back together.
29.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Butch, what was you saying, Butch, you said that they're, if they're grounded, if, I mean, everything else is all, is?
All the onings that we've got installed, or all the onings that I've seen at Bath and other places are mounted straight to sidewalks, they're not.
I think it depends on where they were and how old they are.
They're not set in, they're not set in concrete.
There's one or two that were built in original construction that are all the way through that were poured, the cement were poured around, but most of them have been added to existing structures, sidewalks. I'll revisit, see if DPI has any comments.
Let's go with that.
Yes.
To make it out and find out seeing what make a difference, you know.
The fourth one that's attached is the Washington Field House exterior color. And that's a separate attachment that I see.
That's the one where all the.
Can I ask another question about these onings, though?
Yes, sir.
The one at Bath, is that on the, on the back side, on the football field side?
Back side.
If, if we're going to do that, why don't we go ahead and run it to the gym?
We can, if we have the money.
I mean, you know, you're talking about another 50-foot?
When we do the connecting halls proposed for this coming year, then it connects it on the front side.
Yeah.
Because we can't do the connecting hall on the back side because we have a boiler room and our boilers in there in that little courtyard. We wouldn't want to create a courtyard that we couldn't pass a boiler through, that's why we looked at doing it on the front side of the school instead of the back side.
I was just saying, I know, I know the students normally travel in that direction on the back side of the school. You may want to ask Mr. Swain if he thinks it's a good idea, but I, I mean, if you're going to put up that much on, I'd say go another 50-foot and add that back door to gym so the kids can take that route. I follow up Mr. Swain's. Sorry, he knows about it.
I was saying, so you mentioned enclosures, I mean, I know about one of these, but I'm not sure of all of them. None of these would have any bearings on the enclosures we talked about for the coming up Capitol year, right? I know, like, for instance, CPS, I know that one's over by the gym, and that's not the same sidewalk they were talking about.
No, sir, that's in the 400 building.
That doesn't happen. How about the other two? They wouldn't either, would they?
No, sir, none of them were in the same place, nothing that we would waste. Only one that was on the current budget that's approved, and I hadn't presented it yet, is the Eastern Elementary, the EC building. That's one that Ms. Dana has asked for a handicap ramp to be put there, so it's kind of wasteful to put the owning there now, and in turn, I had to revisit it and do that handicap ramp.
Yeah.
And then that was one proposed area to get the drain out of that courtyard, would be to cut all that up and take it through those steps and then pour the steps back, which we could put a handicap ramp if y'all approved that budget, so I just put that one on the side, I haven't even.
And the north side was the one that goes directly out the back?
Yes, sir. The long one all the way from the building out to the student drop-off, bus drop-off.
Yeah, that's a long way out there, running in the rain.
Two more questions.
Yes, sir.
The one on CPS, you're showing 11,700, but the quote says 63-something. I guess that's us.
Yeah, must be a typo, my problem.
And then, the one at north side, you're showing eight foot wide, isn't that concrete wider than that?
It's like 12. We were trying to keep the load and everything in mind and not make a real wide one where we had the snow load and rain load and water load come, your problems, so.
Yeah. I was just thinking, I don't know, I may want to follow up with Charles, make sure eight foot's going to be wide enough for a group coming off the bus all at one time, just.
That's width of most of our halls.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, the one at CPS, that's not a misquote, I mean, a misprint or whatever you want to call it. call it.
My budget amount at the end though, is it?
Yeah, that's right. That's what they, because I got the original sheet right here.
Okay.
And that's what it had on it. What I was wondering was where it said, I got to find it now, owning, part of it was on owning, maybe that, was that the, no, not really. A canopy, yeah, a fourteen and fifteen foot canopy. Was that anything different?
No, that's where the gym comes and then they propose to turn it because it turns and they do it two different ways.
I didn't know if that's what the difference in the price might have been.
The dollar on the business, to me, looks like sixty-two fifty-one. And what we got, what we got on the sheet is.
The bin?
That's why I think it's, we were in budget.
Yeah, Tindall, Tindall's business is sixty-two fifty-one ninety-one and he's got eleven thousand.
Yeah, that's a typo in my part there, yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Eleven thousand. It was, I know it was under budget.
Sixty-three is right.
The budget amount.
Gotcha. Okay.
We will revisit all those next meeting.
Anything else, Butch?
With the ownings fee?
Okay, let's go to the color of the field house.
Y'all have a, yep, y'all have it up there. And that's the.
They were asking.
The Washington Fieldhouse color, this is the preferred choice from the Washington Athletic Boosters Club, the Washington High School Fieldhouse, and it's back for y'all for approval tonight. It is an additional thirteen hundred and sixty-five dollars to change the existing EPIS color to gray. With our two credits that we have, we will still have a final balance of twenty-nine hundred and ten of the two credits. We had the sewer credit and the roof credit and then, I mean, excuse me, yes, the sewer cast iron credit and the roof credit.
Stanley, why so much? Why thirteen hundred dollars when they've just painted just a, just a couple of bricks?
It's very, no, this is the EPIS. This is that top.
Oh, changing the.
The color of the block is no change. That's, that's no different.
The cream color.
It's the color combination. It's the actual EPIS and the gable and the columns.
Yeah, I got you.
The port is tan now.
What else was I saying? I mean, I had never seen all these figures anyway, because the whole, we never, we never had approved individual items within this, that I recall. Is that right? We just approved four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the whole project. So you, when you're talking about credits, that's, you're just keeping up with that. I'm looking at Lynn because who's keeping up with that? Somebody must be.
This is what I presented last meeting.
Right.
I told y'all what the credit was.
Do your math, yeah.
Of the two amounts and then we did the six thousand not to exceed on the sewer.
Right.
So that left us.
But I mean, it still comes within the same.
Yes, sir. It's not costing us actually any money. We still will get a credit back. This is just affecting our credit we get back.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. It's not going to affect the project and.
We're just approving the color tonight.
That's right.
The, the booster or the folks at Washington are satisfied with the color scheme?
Yes, sir. That's what they sent to us. This is their rendering they had done. Move approval there.
If they're happy.
That's the way I feel, man. They would have been the one chosen anyway.
I agree.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Anybody got any questions before they start painting?
No, but I will say, when you look at the picture.
Yeah, yours is covered in mine.
Yeah, one of the concerns was because of that roof color, and, and you saw it, Michael. It's not that blue.
No, it's not that blue.
No, I wish it were.
It's a, it's a, it's a good looking blue though.
But it looked better with the, they couldn't go with navy. So many of the students and, and a lot of the coaches and stuff wanted navy interjected and I understand that, but it didn't look good with that roof. But going with that gray and white, with that white stripe in the middle, it will allow them to do some navy lettering like on the back of the building. You know, at some point they can, they can do some navy.
Classic.
Yeah, and it does. It's a real clean look. It really is.
I just hope this is a better metal roof than the one we got on the existing school right now.
So you're saying that's not going to be the true roof? This is not the?
The roof is, that's as close as, as we could get, but it's, it's a little sharper glue, which is why they couldn't use navy in any of the paint. You know, those metal roofs only come in certain colors and they're not really changeable.
But it's, I mean, it looks good.
Yeah, it does.
And I'll be honest with you, that other color didn't look bad on it. It did look, I like this better, but the other one wasn't, wasn't bad when you went and looked at it. It wasn't as orange as, as we thought it was in the pictures.
Okay, well, we still have that motion in a second on the floor. So any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's the color we're going to get on.
They're going to paint it this week. The weather's supposed to be good, so.
Maybe we'll finally quit raining and icing or whatever it does from day to day around here.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Sam.
Yes, sir. Field trips.
Have three for your consideration tonight. First one is eighty-one oh six, involves Washington High School on South Side. The third, the fifth through the sixth of March, be overnight, involves FFA students traveling to Greensboro for the FFA Leadership Conference, taking minivan and a number of students and adult chaperones are within lines of what we look for. The next one will be eighty-sixty-two, North Side High School, March the fourteenth through the seventeenth overnight, FBLA to Greensboro for their FBLA conference, again, minivan and again, within range. And then eighty-sixty-one is South Side High School, May the twelfth through the fifteenth overnight and out of state. The band will be going to Charleston for band performance and they'll be taking a charter bus with the appropriate number of chaperones with students.
Now, Phipps, was there another one on here that you've taken off?
There was one that was an out of the country field trip that we're going to discuss later on in another way of dealing with that. So there were four originally.
That's what I thought. I couldn't remember if I was confused. Okay, I didn't remember where. I just remembered there were four.
And we don't, we like to look at that trip, but not have it as a school field trip, but be one of the summer trips that's organized. We're working on that.
Okay.
So tonight I'd like to present these three for your consideration and approve.
Move approval.
And this is, excuse me. Is this South Side thing?
Yes, ma'am.
They're going to. Fine, move on.
Well, I have a motion.
Second, second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Field trips are approved and I believe there's some policy updates.
I'll try to read through all of those. There were so many.
I spent quite a bit of time.
I did, I did.
With the policy updates and also doing quite a bit of work with the connecting policies and the footnotes and the legal work and had a brief conversation with Christine Sheaf today from the School Board Association. What I'd like to do is go through these in the policy update table and then answer any questions that you have to let you know what we're looking at. And we've got a couple that I'm going to recommend that we put on hold and look at approval in May and I'll explain those when we get to it in just a few minutes. But if I can, just go through this order. There's also a policy seventy-one hundred, I think is the number, that is included in your packet, but it's not in the table. And it's what's been referred to as a nepotism policy that's been created out of some work from the General Assembly and I'll talk about it as we go through that in chronological order. So the first one is a new policy twenty-three oh two. This is an optional policy, but it addresses the ability for board members to participate in meetings from a remote location. And we did have this come up one time last year and we didn't have a formal policy on it. And I think the School Board Association's had enough questions about that, that they felt like this was a policy that will be created. And what we were guided by then was what does your policy speak to and does it have ground rules for that? And basically it would allow a board member up to three times during the year to be able to participate remotely, but there's some reasons why the allowance would be there. But one of the caveats to this is that an individual would not be allowed to vote on an item remotely unless they've been able to sit through and hear the conversation that's going on and possibly view it if, depending on the type of setup that you have. So this would be a new policy that just provides that opportunity to our board members.
Would that be considered attendance though?
Yes, it would be.
Yeah, but there are limits on it and that's good.
Now, if you want to get to these all together, rather than individual?
Yeah, if anybody has a question, they can ask on the individual.
Twenty-three ten is the public participation at board meetings and it recognizes and clarifies a requirement for a board vote to hear a party's presentation that's not already on the agenda. This is just a change to deal with the newly revised Roberts Rule of Order. So this just gets that in alignment with what's been updated in Roberts Rule. Thirty-three twenty deals with school field trips. There were two issues here that I wanted to address and make sure that you're aware of before you take a vote. Bullet number five prohibits trips outside the continental U.S. You know, we've had this conversation with some field trip requests that have come in. If this field trip, if this school trip policy is approved, then we would not allow outside the continental U.S. field trips. Now, that doesn't mean that a student group couldn't go, but they wouldn't be able to go as a school sanctioned field trip. And then number, the one right below that would be bullet number six, clarifies the fee provision. And it states in here that if there's a field trip that's required, that the students can't be charged fees. I did a little bit of research today and asked principals how many charge fees. Most field trips right now, we charge a fee for to try to at least cover gas or the bus driver's cost or the cost to a ticket, but none of those are required. So Christine Sheaf said, because we don't require students to go and we do make a provision for students who can't afford to be able to attend, that we'd be within lines. I wanted to make sure that we didn't adopt a, a policy here and then put our principals in a corner in terms of how they handle field trips. So I want you to be aware of that. Thirty-four oh five is a students at risk of academic failure. We're going to hold on this because there's some work that we're doing in the school district with regards to PEPs, personalized education plans, and another acronym that you'll read in the policy is MTSS, which deals with a multi-tier system of support. Once we have that ready and we'll have it to you for approval for the following year and then also make sure we have it in time to go into the student code of conduct in the faculty handbook. The next policy on the bottom of the third page is thirty-four twenty. It's student promotion and accountability. And again, because this deals with PEPs, we're going to ask for this to be put on hold. However, if you'll notice, bullet number two refers to section E, where it expands a group of students entitled to attend summer reading camps, would include first and second grade students. We don't have to go ahead and adopt this policy because we're already doing that. Once we adopt it, that becomes a piece of the policy, but it's already something that we're planning for and practices in place to do that, so you don't have to worry about it. Next one is thirty-four sixty, graduation requirements. And the one thing here was it deleted language in the introductory section that at the point they were talking about the start of the requirement for the CPR credit to be able to graduate. And that's come and gone now in terms of it not being optional and it's recorded there. It's also a requirement that it updates course requirements consistent with School Board of Education policy. Forty forty and seventy-three ten deal with staff and student relations. And this is a recommended update. It's an extensively rewritten policy with the majority of the new language coming in to address one-to-one electronic communications with students. And that'll be one of the pieces that we want to make sure that our teachers are well aware of. And there's some limits on what they can do and can't do. We want to make sure that those are followed, but we feel like this protects the adults and the students as well and make sure that folks are following these for specific obvious reasons that are there. And then it also updates course requirements consistent with the, I'm sorry, it updates the legal requirements and cross-reference that's recommended. We're going to hold on forty-one ten, which is an immunization policy, because we don't want to confuse folks with it not being the end of the year yet. And then we're going to hold on forty-three oh three, because there's some pieces that are going to be coming down. We fill out through legislation, which will have us revisit this and we don't want to adopt a policy and then have to change it. This may be one that we want to bring back for consideration if legislation doesn't require us to do that. Forty-three twenty, tobacco products. This is the one that deals with students. Basically goes in and adds things such as vaporizer and other electronic smoking devices, whether or not they contain tobacco or nicotine. This is consistent with our student code of conduct and again, it updates the legal references which are required. Forty-three thirty-five is a policy unfortunately that's, that we've become aware of in the last couple of weeks that deals with criminal behavior. One thing I want to highlight here is that the word may is at the beginning of the policy and doesn't say that the superintendent or principal has to do anything in particular, but it gives us the ability to use some discretion, which we want to do. The only change that you really note here is the third bullet. It deletes the requirement that principals report to law enforcement based on reasonable belief. And the reason for that, that's been taken out of the general statute and they want this policy to match up, but we still are going to encourage our principals, if they have reasonable belief that some type of criminal activity has gone on, to report that to the SROs. It's not in the policy because it's not a part of the law. What we don't want to have happen is for somebody to trunk charges up or to do something like that, which we've not had a problem for, but we want to make sure that students are protected and we feel like that's the way to do that. Forty-three fifty-three is something that we want to hold on, again, because it would impact long-term suspensions and the three hundred and sixty-five day suspension. We want to put this in place moving forward to next year. Fifty twenty-six and seventy-two fifty are smoking and tobacco products that extend beyond just to students and it includes the same, the vaporizers and electronic smoking devices, so they're consistent with one another. Fifty twenty-seven and seventy-two seventy-five deal with weapons and explosives that are prohibited. And what this does is goes in and changes the piece that deals with concealed carry permit holders on campus. And if you read that, there's certain things that they're allowed to do. They're allowed to have the weapon out if they're putting it in a sealed locked container. They're allowed to have the weapon on their person if they remain in a locked car. So there's things like that that are consistent, which are a little different than what our old policy had, but again, this backs up with what we have in the law. Fifty thirty is a community use of facilities. We were ahead of the game on this one because of the K B rentals money that we had and the updated playgrounds. The only issue that I have here is if you move to the notes section at the very bottom, it says if the board does not intend to open its outdoor property to public use, it should not adopt these policy modifications. And what my recommendation would be is that we're going to say that we're going to, we will open some of our properties, but the word specified is listed where it says that the board will make specified indoor and outdoor school facilities available. And then, then it leaves that up to us to be able to determine what's specified. And then on the page five, right now it says outdoor property and facilities of the school system will be open. That'll be changed to say specified outdoor property and facilities of the school system will be open. system will be open. And again, we have the ability to determine which schools and which sites we choose, because there's some for a variety of reasons that aren't included in that. Then sixty-three fifty and sixty-three fifteen both involve transportation, safety and student transportation, and then drivers. And this adds a safety requirement which requires bus drivers to do a hand signal for students. And we've already done that. It became law back in January. We've been doing it for the entire school year. And then also some of the training dates that have to be recorded. We've got all that put in place. It updates the legal reference and is required, and it was strongly recommended, but because the requirement became law of January first, two thousand and sixteen, we have to do it now anyway. Worktime and overtime seventy-five hundred. This removes a word "written" to suggest that there was a written agreement and statement. We in Beaufort County have had our folks sign the paperwork, but now Mark's working on a piece, a document that would involve just a signature on one page without having to have two documents signed, but we'd be following the same procedures and guidelines that we have in the past. Ninety-ten, ninety-twenty are two that deal with site selection and facility design. And the only changes here are allowing the superintendent to have some ability to make some contract decisions, as long as it falls within what's in policy sixty-four twenty, under a ninety-thousand-dollar limit. But you can rest assured, I'm not making any kind of decision that involves site selection and facility design without coming to you all and getting that. It falls in line with what our other policies are. And then ninety-one-ten retitles the policy. It used to be called selection of architects and engineers, and now it's use of, use and selection of architects, engineers, surveyors, and construction managers. And then there's some other minor light changes on seventeen forty-two fifty-sixty responding to complaints, twenty-five hundred hearings before the board, sixty-five fifty vandalism, and ninety-four hundred sale disposal and lease of board-owned rental property. The only other one that's not in that table, but you do have a copy of the policy, is policy seventy-one hundred, and it deals with the selection, it's recruitment and selection of personnel. And it's the piece that we, that you all heard if you've been to the school board meetings, where it talks about the hiring of family members, the nepotism policy. It's strongly recommended that in section A that all employment decisions be consistent with the board's objective of providing students with a sound, basic education. Obviously, we'd want to do that. One of the notes and what I want you to be aware of is the term "immediate family" is defined in statute the way that the policy reflects, and we feel like that is certainly okay, and it's what's consistent with our policies. But down on the second bullet deals with central office staff administrators. And there's a listing in the policy, and there's language that's in the writing that you've got here that we want to add to the end of that policy, which would include superintendent, assistant superintendent, directors, supervisors, principals. And then we'd have the word "and", and what would follow after that would be any other central office staff with oversight responsibility for any aspect of the educational program or support services of the school system. And what this means is that the board has to be made aware that any of these individuals, if they have a family member who's being hired, we have to let you know that before the vote is taken. And we certainly want to do that anyway. And in Beaufort County, you all know that it's difficult sometimes not to have a family member connect somewhere, so we don't ever want to assume that they are or they're not. But we're following this policy, want to make sure that everyone is aware of any nepotism or any connections that we have to family members. Again, it's policy seventy-one hundred, and the change that we would add would be under the nepotism section two A dot two. And it would just be adding that statement that Christine Sheaf has provided, so that we would further define central office staff administrators. That's a lot. We've gone through it. We've looked at it as many ways as we can. There's several here that we feel like for scheduling reasons, we want to hold on, and then we'll bring back to you probably in April, and then look for approval in May, so that we can get them in the handbooks and other documents that we have to publish.
On just the five that you're pulling out?
Right. And any other new ones that we happened to get in the update before that?
Okay. So, other than the five he pulled out, I'm sure you got all that.
I have one question. Well, I actually have two. One, I'm going to have to, it's student-related, so I'll need to ask that in closed session. The other one, and it's about this policy.
Which one?
About the transfer after a conviction.
Okay.
Okay. And then versus a charge, because there's somewhere in there that it talks about whether or not they've been charged. The other one is, this one I can, I can say without being in closed session, the staff-student relations, and it talks about the one-to-one electronic communication with students. Somewhere in there, isn't there, don't they address coaching and, but I didn't, I didn't see this when I was glancing at it, but I thought in a previous time when I did it, I actually read through all of this.
You didn't mention coaching. Couple of things it says is that-
Because coaches do notify sometimes in a group text that practice is going to be early, it's going to be late, that sort of thing.
The one-to-one communication would be anything that's not, the principal's not aware of, supervisor, it may not always be a principal. And you have to have permission to be able to communicate with the student that way. So, what coaches were asking them to do at the beginning when they have their team meetings is to say, "We may want to communicate with your child about, you know, changing or change of times or canceling practice. Are you okay with that?" As long as we've got permission to do it.
So, what we're going to encourage is for coaches, ADs, and administrators at each school to get a written permission at the beginning of a school year, that there should be some, because it's not always going to be, I mean, like, you know, Butch's, doesn't Tabitha sometimes have a competition or something somewhere? And they need to be able to communicate with him. I don't want them to be breaking a rule. So, they're going to need to get something in writing, signed by a parent.
Let me, let me read this. Restrictive, restrictions on electronic communications. It's page one and two of the policy, and it's written in red. These are some of the new pieces that were put in place. Item number three says employees are prohibited from engaging in other forms of one-to-one electronic communication, which would include voice, voicemail, email, texting, photo, or video with students without written prior approval of the employee supervisor and the student's parent. It says, however, this rule shall not apply, however, if one of the, one or more of the following circumstances exist. Number one, the communication is one for educational purposes. Two, is conducted through a school system-provided platform, which archives all communications for a period of three years. Three, and occurs after the employee has given prior notice to his or her supervisor or designated such communication. Or it could be that the communication serves as an educational purpose and is simultaneously copied or transmitted to the employee supervisor, which- I mean, that's suggesting that if I'm communicating with an individual, I'm CC my principal, so they're aware, or my supervisor of what's going on. If it's a bona fide emergency, provided the communication is disclosed to the supervisor and the parent or guardian as soon as reasonably responsible. And then it, the communication derives from a relationship or association outside of the school setting that occurs with consent of the parent or guardian, provided such communication does not otherwise violate this or the board policy. If you go back and look at our other policy that's, that's referenced in this policy, it says that you may have situations where a faculty member, an employee, may have an existing relationship with a student who's not their child. It could be a niece or nephew. It could be a person that they coached coming up in school. It could be a friend of their child's friend. They're allowed to communicate with them. But again, as long as parents are aware of that. And all the communication needs to go through a system-provided platform, so that we've got the ability to archive it, unless you give permission otherwise to do that. Again, this is to protect the adult and the child. We want to make sure we follow-
Yeah. I don't disagree with the policy. I just, I want to make sure that our coaches and our, our leaders of the different organizations and clubs that we have, make sure that they understand what they need to do at the very beginning of the school year, so they have that documentation.
And we'll work on a form that's consistent for folks to use. And once they get the signature, they're able to do that. And that really is a preferred way to communicate.
Yeah.
So, that's a lot, but we've gone through it, tried to look at everything. Doesn't mean that there won't be something at some point, if, if legislation changes or there's a policy that needs to be updated, we'll obviously bring these back to you.
Now, this is under action, but we're actually, are we going to take action? Are we going to wait on someone?
We take action on those that are presented and hold the others.
We actually saw these earlier.
We have, they've been out since-
Right, right.
So, we don't need approval of moving anything. We're good. If, if everybody has our questions answered.
Well, the question I need to ask in closed session will, won't prohibit, won't change-
That was going to ask you, are you okay with us doing-
I am, I am. Move approval on these updates.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any last questions?
If not, other than the five Don noted, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question.
Yep.
Now that we've passed this.
Well, that's a good way to do it.
Thanks, Matt.
But it's a bookkeeping question.
Okay.
How much money do we pay these folks to keep us out of jail and out of trouble?
Which folks?
The School Board Association, those attorneys up there.
The policy update, there was an original charge that we paid over the period of three months, three years.
Three years.
And we're, we're out of that. But we have a subscription cost, which is, Land, do you know how much that is?
I don't.
I can find that out for you. I don't know.
I don't know what it is, but it's darn well worth whatever we're paying, because I tell you, I don't want this job to have to, you know.
It's a lot of dollars.
You can tell each other a word around?
Yeah. I'm glad that they're there, and I'm, whatever we're paying them, it's well worth it.
I think you're right.
Yeah. I won't, don't let us lapse our membership.
So, that carries us to closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven, A-one, to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one-one-five-C dash three-twenty-one, and student records under General Statute one-one-five-C dash four-oh-two and twenty USC twelve-thirty-two G.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay. We're back out of closed session. And our first order of business is to approve personnel agenda. That was just reviewed.
So, who's the chair?
Second. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Somewhere on my left. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay. February, March calendar updates. So, yes, somebody tell me when the meetings are.
Are you confident that February twenty-ninth will be our last budget meeting? I noticed there weren't any in March.
We had not moved far enough ahead to say, yeah. I felt we'll probably have the budget meeting on the twenty-ninth at five, and that hopefully will be the next to the last budget meeting. And we're hoping that we'll wrap up capital maybe in March, and then hopefully Lynn and I will have gotten some information that we can share with you building the local current expense budget. But we don't have any, there's no information yet. And I'm hopeful that we'll get something late this month, early March. But if you want to go and pick a date in March to hold for the, for the meeting, we certainly can.
So, currently, we're looking at the twenty-ninth, and then our regular board meetings are the first in fifteen. And you want one other date?
With the twenty-first of March work?
So, Monday. Well, back to Matt again.
Oh.
Well, yeah. Isn't Monday's bad for you?
Yeah, Monday's bad.
That's Tuesday.
We've got twenty-second of March.
Tuesday.
Oh, yeah. That's a good date right there.
What time?
Uh, what time?
It's five o'clock.
Early the better on Tuesday.
Can everybody do five?
Is that budget?
Yeah, that'd be budget. Hopefully wrapping up capital and getting into local expense.
Twenty-first, twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
We're getting right in the heart of softball season here. And all, all high school softball games are on Tuesdays and Fridays. So, and I'm, right now, I'm missing every one in the month of March if we do that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's too late. I've ordered it.
Is there another date anybody wants to look at?
What about Thursdays? How about the seventeenth?
Go for it. I can do that.
What about you, Matt?
But Don, it's fine.
Right now, fine. Now, the time is okay. That'd be perfect.
No, that's, that's Monday, Thursday. I can't do that.
What?
Thursday.
Do you have a-
Thursday before Easter. I can't do that.
You have a certain-
In March?
So, the seventeenth. That's St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, I was going to say.
All right.
Just don't sing. That's how you don't sing.
I will be here with my green-
Five o'clock on the seventeenth?
You're heading to Appalachian State on the eighteenth, so I don't know the seventeenth, if you'd be able to have a board meeting and still get the app, unless you want to leave after that meeting.
No.
Is it instead of the twenty-second?
Well, meet earlier in the day.
It's going to be March before we figure this out.
What about the twenty-four?
How many people have a- How many people have a conflict on Wednesday evening? I don't have a Wednesday church service at my-
How about the twenty-four, Thursday, the twenty-four?
No, I can't be, I mean, I-
You have church service on-
Well, a lot of people have church.
I can't do the twenty-four. After I said that, I mean, I have a meeting that night already.
All right.
We're going to need another one after the next one. Well, why don't we just wait to look at the calendar and then-
Mark, if you write down the minority, did you put that on your?
We want the first first.
Let's go ahead and put the twenty-second if that's good with everybody else.
How about, when does the season start?
Now, let's hold off on that. That's probably a bad day for me.
Oh, first of March. What about the first of March?
Do you coach? No, my daughter plays.
Yeah. They're going, I'd be in trouble on the twenty-second.
What about the tenth of March?
I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah.
I've ruled out so many days.
That's not too early.
It's a hard set of meetings.
That's the Thursday. And I don't know what we'll know then, but we'll, we'll certainly try to wrap up.
Just put down ten, probably that. Okay. Five o'clock on the tenth.
This is the third time I'm going to run a meeting.
Ms. Booth.
I know. I can put it on my phone.
We'll be back together twice before then, so we can-
The third, we need to pick another day.
We need to pick another day?
Yes, ma'am. Both Dr. Pips and I'll be out of town on that.
Both of y'all be out of town on the third?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, didn't y'all know that when y'all took that meeting?
No, ma'am.
I mean, that's on Thursday, right?
We have the minority hiring practice committee scheduled for March the third, but both Mark and myself have got conflicts on that date, so we want to look at a different date.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then, you didn't pick, you didn't pick the tenth, did you?
Yes, the tenth at five o'clock.
Mm. That was nice. Okay. What about, what about, let's, let's shoot for the ninth then.
Unless you wanted to do the tenth at four o'clock, because you do it earlier?
Yeah.
You can do it just before the meeting.
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good.
Sure. She's retired.
The tenth at four. Yeah, the tenth at four.
Okay.
Time to go.
Yeah. Yeah. You got all that down, Lisa.
She's so good.
Yes, she is.
We're really lucky.
Anything else on the calendar, folks?
Sixteen, twenty-nine, the first.
How about board member updates? Anybody'd like to share anything?
I got two things. One is I was told by their special person, A.I.E., my daughter, to remind everybody, and I think Butch had already responded about going to read, every board member should have gotten a letter, I think she took your addresses off, that they would love to have you come read at Eastern, and you could pick your day and your time. And they'll sign you up with some kids, thirty minutes of your time. So, I'm reminding everybody to please do that if you have time. And the second thing is, I just want to take this time to congratulate the Washington High School boys swim team who won the state championship, and it's the first state championship they've won in over thirty years. So, just great job.
And a future meeting, we may want to invite them over, bring them in. I'm sure they'll love that.
Any other board member updates?
I guess wishing Dr. Pips a happy birthday tomorrow.
Yes. As a gift to him, we're not going to sing, but it is his birthday.
Is it tomorrow?
And we're not going to meet.
Right. And we're not going to meet. So, everybody that sees him after tomorrow, if they see this on TV, they can wish him a belated happy birthday.
I'm just happy we're not going to sing.
Superintendent updates?
No.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think I reminded you on last meeting, but I like to keep reminding you that I'll be taking off for Friday, Thursday. Next Thursday, I will be going to represent you again. And I'm going to tell you every time I go this town, because this is my last year. So, I will be going to represent you again at the board of directors on Thursday and Friday of next week, and I will see how much good news I can bring back.
Please bring some good news.
And you're going to ask them about the calendar? I will. I will ask them about the calendar. I'll make sure that my district is interested in that and willing to let them take place. And Dr. Pips, I did have a lot of people who did not respond, for whatever reason, didn't respond to the request to have input on the calendar. But there, the overwhelming question that I got asked a lot was why we didn't attempt to request a waiver. It's one thing to request it and be turned down, but they said, "Why don't we even try?" Because other counties occasionally do get granted a waiver, and how much nicer it would be if we could have, it's water under the bridge now, we passed the calendar, could have started on August twenty-second. Because didn't you say that we don't have those days built in now for bad weather next year?
We don't. But we, there was not a waiver option. The only, the only waivers that were allowed were for school districts that had met certain criteria for canceled school in six of the last ten years, and we didn't meet that requirement. So, there was not a waiver to apply for.
Because some congressional candidates, as well as sitting congressional members, really weren't aware that it was, it was so set in stone. And they thought, a couple of them said, "Well, why don't you request to get it started?" And I said, "Well, that's not really an option." So, Ms. Booth is going to follow up on that with the board of directors. But I just, I wanted the public to know that why we didn't request a waiver to start on a different day.
We were allowed to request waivers in the past. That's been taken away. If you look at the state calendar law, there's not a waiver option that we have that we can apply for.
And, and are you going to address whether or not we have to make up the time?
Talk about that just a minute.
I figured so.
On that same topic, I had several people ask me why Martin County and Pitt County have started before us in the past, and, which I didn't know they had. But they said, "Why can they start earlier than us?" So, I didn't know how to answer that question. I don't know that they physically did, but the people that were talking to me.
I don't know. Look at calendars. We've tried, we've started, from my knowledge, to the earliest date that we could possibly start with the new requirements that we've had to work with.
Is it possible, excuse me, excuse me, is it possible that they could have received those dates when they were in order to, to ask for waiver and got it set in then?
I think the waiver would expire at the end of each year. I think you have to reapply for it.
Yeah. But we just, they just cut that off like in last few years, was it last-
I think it's two or three years in the run of where we are now. I can look at that. We've tried, we've always started as early as we could to try to take advantage of trying to get things finished early in January, preferably by the end of the Christmas break. There's just no way to do that.
That was, that was my answer to them, was that, you know, we're starting as early as we legally can. And, but I didn't, couldn't answer why Martin County and other counties have started earlier.
The only other option would be the early college, or the schools that have a different calendar than that, they've been granted the ability to do that.
Is it not, I don't know about Martin County, maybe you can correct me on this, but I've heard in Pitt County, it's because they have some class ties to East Carolina University. They do some alignments together. So, they're allowed to make adjustments to their calendar to more align VCU. Because I was actually thought about that, is there any way we can use some of our online classes to form an alliance with East Carolina, so that we can get under that same. But that's what, that's what Pitt County does. I don't know what Martin County does.
Well, and then the question is, do you want to schedule for your high school students than you do for middle and elementary? And that creates a problem for families. So, we had some questions out of Martin County a couple of years ago about that. And they were, they were allowed to do things, well, I was told, with high schools, but they didn't have the same calendar for middle and elementary. So, it's complicated.
It is. But it's something to ask, because I think in Pitt County, all the schools abide by. So, but-
Local control is what we like.
That's what you need, then that would solve the problem.
That's right. Speaking of calendar, we missed last Friday because of the weather.
Yeah, that was my next question.
We, we made that an optional teacher work day. And what the public and I think even faculty members need to understand is that when we're out of school, we have two-hundred-and-fifteen days we have to have as pay days that people work to receive a paycheck. When students are out like that, we make it an optional teacher work day. That gives us the ability in a future work day to be able to change them and make that a student instructional day. We built some things into our calendar this year in terms of hours, that we can subtract the hours missed on Friday, and we're not anywhere near the minimum instructional And we're not anywhere near the minimum instructional hours. We can do that for a couple of weather days and not have any issues. So because we made the twelfth an optional teacher workday, we don't have to make that up. We're in good standing right now, provided we don't miss more days. Monday, however, is a little bit different. It was not a scheduled student day, it was a teacher workday. And because of the ice situation and because I had notification between eight and nine o'clock that most of the bridges in the county were frozen, several roads have been closed. Emergency management asked us not to have anybody on the road, reminded them that we had a workday. We didn't want to put anybody in harm's way, had no way of knowing when the ice was going to melt. We made that a cancellation across the board. And what our employees need to do is work with supervisors to make up that time because we don't have a day to make that up. So we'll be, we'll be working with them on that. On some other issues, the final draft for the strategic plan is in the works. And we'll have that posted on the website. Folks want to take another look at that and give us feedback. We hope to have it polished up by early March. We're working, as you've heard already, on the capital budget. And Mark mentioned to me that the North Carolina Supreme Court is currently hearing the appeal with the North Carolina Legislature about taking teacher tenure away. And there's been quite a bit of discussion as to whether or not those individuals who have already attained tenure, is it a property right that can be taken away from them? So this is something that we're watching very carefully. And that's the question really that has to be asked and we're waiting to find out what the court's results with that will be and then what would the next appeal be if there is one. So many things are going on in the legislature and the judiciary areas of the world that we're having to watch. We just want to keep people aware of that.
Okay, anything else?
No.
I'll make a motion again.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.